Mr. Malley is excused. Mr. Wilkens?
Here.
Ms. Toth?
Here.
Ms. Sager?
Here.
Dr. Levine?
Here.
And Mr. Gonzalez?
Here.
You have a quorum, you can proceed.
Thank you very much. Good evening all, and welcome to tonight's meeting, January 19th, of the City of Summit Zoning Board of Adjustment. My name is Joe Steiner. I'm the Vice Chairman of the Summit Zoning Board. And in accordance with New Jersey statute 10:14-10, 4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the newspaper of record and has been posted here at City Hall. This meeting is a judicial procedure, and any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the Board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For the benefit of the interested public, this meeting is being live streamed by the five cameras around City Hall here, to the city's YouTube page, and also being broadcast on Summit's governmental channel, which is Comcast Channel 34 and Verizon Channel 30. In close consultation with the City Clerk's office, as well as careful consideration of the relevant CDC and New Jersey Department of Health guidance, the following precautions have been adopted to protect Board members, professionals, including city staff, applicants, members of the interested public, and others in consideration of the ongoing public health concerns. All meeting attendees are required to wear these face masks, regardless of vaccination status, unless speaking as part of the formal proceedings. Actually, they've asked if we could have everyone continue to wear your mask during any presentations, unless it becomes a problem for people to hear you, in which case we may ask you to remove it. Also, because this is being done via, having a transcript done via the videos, we need everyone to come to a microphone when they're speaking, otherwise, so that everything can be adequately and accurately recorded. Also know that rigorous and regular cleaning of the facilities has been conducted by the city's staff. Please note that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and in the back of the room where we all came in. And the city has an assisted living, listening system to assist the hearing impaired, and if anyone needs it, please go to the dais, ask for it, and return it after the meeting. Now, to introduce some folks. Andy Ball, to my right, is the zoning board's attorney. He will advise board members on matters of law, and is the key interface with the applicant's attorney. Mr. Ball will not be voting on the applications. Chris Nicola, next to Mr. Ball, is a city employee and is the zoning board's secretary. He works with applicants on preparing their applications, planning our agendas, and keeping our meeting minutes. Ms. Nicola also does not vote on the applications. Our board consists of seven regular members and up to four alternates. All members can participate in the hearings tonight, but a maximum of only seven can vote. Most applications require a simple majority to be approved. Some applications require five affirmative votes. You'll be told which majority will be required before we begin deliberations. We generally hear the cases in the order in which they are listed on the agenda. We try to have each hearing last no more than 30 minutes, but we do understand that some cases are too complex to be heard within that time. Each hearing begins with the applicant or their attorney giving us an overview of their application and the variances that are required. We then hear from any expert witnesses the applicant may have to help explain the application and why the variances are needed. The board members may ask questions of the applicant, their attorney, and the expert witnesses. Once the board members and our board professionals have completed their questioning, we'll open it up to the public to have the opportunity to ask questions. This is not a time that we will ask for you to tell us what you think about the case. We'll have that opportunity later. Before you ask your questions, please clearly state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address. And again, please come up to the microphone. It's important that our court reporter be able to keep a clear and accurate public record. After the witnesses have all been heard, members of the audience will have their second opportunity to speak, and at that time you may express your opinion, positive or negative, about the application. Then the public hearing is closed, and we enter into executive session. And that's where the board members will discuss the case and vote. You will be able to listen to our executive session, but you normally will not be able to participate in that discussion. Most applications are heard and decided in the same evening, but if a case requires additional information or testimony that we cannot get presented tonight, we'll carry your case to another night or another date, and it will not be decided at this meeting. Chris Anderson, the city zoning officer, has asked that I remind all applicants that they must read carefully the resolution, which is the document that the zoning board's decision, and pay particular attention to the conditions contained in that resolution. For example, if a landscaping plan is required, you must obtain one and submit it to John Linsin, the city's forester. If a grading plan is required, then you must have one prepared by a civil engineer and submit three copies, along with the application fee, to the city engineering division. Failure to satisfy all conditions in a resolution will result in a delay approving your application, and it will cause extra work for city zoning staff. The resolutions documenting the board's decision are normally available one month after we decide the case. So now what I'm going to do is ask each of the cases to come forward and tell us how many witnesses they have, whether they're represented by an attorney, and if they can complete their case in 30 minutes. First is Nicholas Ismert? Welcome.
Good evening. Nicholas Ismert, at 38 Oakley Avenue. It's just me tonight. I have my plans that were submitted via the engineer.
Okay.
And we're requesting a variance.
Thank you. Can I complete it in 30 minutes?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Okay. Thank you. We'll take you first. Daniel and Erin Peak.
Hi. I'm Dan Peak.
Erin Peak.
We're here to discuss the variance we've applied for. We can complete this in 30 minutes. We've brought two witnesses, our architect, Mike DiGeronimo, and our engineer, Rich Keller.
Okay. Then we'll... Great. 17 Maltis Roll Road, I believe we are not going to take up tonight. Mr. Nicola, can you explain what's going on?
Yes. What's happened in this application's instance was what we call a defective notice. So there was an unanticipated floor area ratio variance during the course of the zoning officer's review. So since that notice was not part of the applicant's notice, since it was unforeseen, they're unable to proceed. So we don't have to formally carry them to a new date. Me and the applicant are currently working on a new date that we can reschedule them for, which will then, they'll have to renotice for that date.
Is anyone here for that particular case? Okay. Should board members retain their packages?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. So board members hang on to what we are going to move them. And then 503 Springfield Avenue Associates.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chairman, and members of the board. Samantha Alfonso of Dempsey-Dempsey and Sheehan, here on behalf of, excuse me, the applicant, 503 Springfield Avenue Associates. The applicant, given the significant importance of this application, not just to the applicant, but understood importance to the board and the city, the applicant just would ask for a few extra minutes of the board's time to discuss whether or not to proceed this evening, just given, again, the importance of the matter and the wish to have all members present, if possible, who were able to hear the first hearing. So if we could just discuss it with our applicant for a few moments before we decide whether to proceed this evening.
Okay, go right ahead.
Thank you.
I guess when we get to you, you'll tell us what you've decided.
Thank you.
Okay. So we will move ahead to Nicholas Ismert.
Good evening. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, members of the board.
Hold on, he's going to swear you in. If you could please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matters, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name.
Nicholas Ismert, spelled I-S-M-E-R-T.
Thank you.
Okay. Can you give us a quick, brief overview of what your case is?
Yes. So we are, we live at 38 Oakley Avenue. We've been living in Summit for about a year and a half now. Love the town, appreciate the time. We are asking for a variance for lot coverage, to install a patio in our backyard to enjoy with our family. I have a couple little kids at home, live right around the corner from Wilson Primary Center. As part of that, we hired an engineer to put together a plan to address water runoff concerns, and the plans include a recommendation to install a drywall to offset that.
Okay. You're testifying as the owner. You're not an expert on drainage, right? Okay. I wasn't sure if you said you were an engineer.
No.
Okay. Board members, do we have questions of the applicant? You do not have any other witnesses, correct?
No.
Okay. Let me defer to, I know that our experts have some questions and some recommendations from their reports. Did you have a chance to read the reports? Did you have any comments on what the recommendations were?
I read the report. I spoke with my engineer again last night, and he said everything sounds similar to what he was recommending, although I'm not an engineer. I think there was one main difference from what I read in the report, which was a prefabricated drywall versus a gravel pit approach.
Well, it would be surrounded by gravel, but what was proposed was a four-inch perforated pipe only. So everything would drain to that pipe, and that pipe would distribute the water into the gravel trench, but it's not going to be as effective as if you had a structure. So whether it's a concrete structure or a plastic structure, that's what we would recommend over just a plastic pipe.
So are you willing to accept the condition that would be, could be placed on your application, that you comply with the recommendation of?
Yes.
Yep. That was the only comment that we had.
I had a question on the location of the proposed drywall. When I saw the property, I noticed there was a lot of water pooling under the existing play structure. So I guess, you know, your engineer here, maybe, Chris, you could shed some light on that location. I think that's adequate. We also probably need to cover the play structure, because that was noted in Chris's letter.
Yeah, I mean, they could grade somewhat towards it. I don't know if it would solve the problem, but the grade on that drywall is proposed to be 100.2 feet high, so that's not the elevation. So they could possibly do some drainage to alleviate that drainage problem. I mean, it's not, unless it's going off property, it's really, it's not a hindrance to the neighbors, but it is more of a, you know, a problem for them. So I mean, that could solve two things at the same time.
Yeah, because under that play structure, it seemed like great mosquito habitat in a rainy situation.
Yeah, that water does stay. That is the low spot. It doesn't really drain off to the back or to the side. I'd be happy to grade it towards the drains and make sure that the drain can capture that runoff.
That would work out well for you, and also would meet what the board would like to see.
Okay. So you're willing to accept that as a condition?
Yes.
And would that sound?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Should we consider retaining?
It's up to you. It's pretty minor. It's not like a larger project. I don't think that's, it's not, again, it's not affecting any neighbors that I'm aware of, so I would say that that may be.
So the only neighbor affected would be him?
Right. So really, it's kind of going overboard, I think, in this instance, because it's such a small project.
Okay. Now, to the play structure, which our experts say should not be there. How do we handle that one? Are you requesting a variance that we allow it to stay, or?
I can move it forward five feet. That is fine, if that's preferred. Or if a variance is okay, that is fine, too, whatever the board prefers.
What exactly are we dealing with? Is it, I imagine, a movable playset?
Yeah, it's a swing set, and I could physically move it forward away from the fence.
It's not currently fixed to the ground or anything?
There's some stakes, but nothing permanent.
Okay.
I understand it backs up against Wilson School? Or is there another neighbor there?
There's a neighbor behind us. They have a garage, and then behind that, they have a shed. And this is directly over the fence by the shed that's behind the garage.
How tall is that fence?
A six-foot fence, I believe. The place that's probably eight or nine feet tall. Does that sound about right?
It seems about right. I mean, my impression was that it was in the, like, if I were setting up a yard, that's the place I would put it, inside the restrictions. Seems like it would interfere with the use of the yard if you moved it too far forward.
I think Krista went out of her way to note that it's subtle in color and well screened.
I actually had a question about that, because on a different application last year, the board had a conversation about what constitutes a structure. You were not here, Mr. Ball. It was your predecessor, whose name escapes me, Dennis. But I thought that what we settled on is if there's a foundation, it's a structure.
If there's a foundation, it's clearly a structure.
Okay.
And in this case, I think the relatively permanent fixture of it would constitute a structure under the definition. So I mean, it is up to the board. Would you go either way here, getting the sense that no one really wants to force the relocation if it's unnecessary, and in that case you can proceed with the variance for that difference of four and change feet that we're talking about here?
Kind to see that. A lot of heads nodding, so do we add that in as well, sir?
Yep. We would consider that request as a variance.
Any other questions from the board? Any other questions from the public? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, is there anything you'd like to say in conclusion?
I hope you guys will approve it. I mean, to be frank, you know, I really would love to have a patio in the backyard to enjoy with my family, and I want to do it the right way. We plan to be here a long time.
Okay.
Just a few...
Conditions.
Before we get to conditions, a few legal niceties. Just want to ask you a couple questions on the proposal. Is the patio, in your opinion, going to be, understanding it's not a professional opinion, but going to be an attractive addition to the home?
I hope so.
And is it going to improve the function of the home?
Yeah, it will.
Do you foresee any negative consequences to any of the neighboring properties as a result of this application?
No, I do not.
Okay.
I've spoken with both of my neighbors on either side, so.
And they're in support of the application?
Yeah.
That's always good to hear. Any other questions from the board members?
I think we've covered that, so I think now we're ready to move into executive sessions.
All right.
Conditions.
The conditions, I have noted, my computer didn't just freeze up.
It just went hello.
Okay. So first, as our usual, compliance with the conditions noted in the board engineer's memorandum. So everything in there would be incorporated here. The second specific condition is that the applicant will grade the property to increase the drainage to the drywall, subject to review and approval of the city engineer. Any other conditions from the board, or I think that covers it?
And we added the variance for the place, for the play unit stays where it is.
Thank you.
Okay. I would entertain someone to begin our discussion?
I was happy to say something. You know, I think this is a very modest request for variance that will increase your enjoyment and functionality of your property. And I would also just like to say, a little bit besides this, I think that in, you know, in the full kind of experience of having families and having houses for a long time, I think we need to be careful about calling playsets permanent structures. I've owned my house for 20 years, and in that time I've had two play structures, a swing set and a trampoline. They're both long gone. Neither of them were permanent. While we had them, they felt permanent. We had them for years, but things like that are not permanent. They're temporary. I hope you get your patio.
Any other comments from the board? Any other discussions?
I can also support this. I mean, certainly, the patio as proposed is a significant improvement over the postage stamp that they have right now. And I'll note that the property is screened on, or screened separated by driveways on both sides from the neighbors, so there's plenty of buffer. I think any drainage issues are being adequately addressed, so I can certainly support this application.
Anyone else? Yes?
Sure. And also, just to add, none of the changes are visible from the front of the home as well, because it's all within the confines of the width of the home. The staff reports were all very supportive as well, which I always pay special note of. No trees are being removed. Good luck.
Anyone else? I would also concur that there are no negatives to this application in my mind, and it does improve the home and the family environment, and I can certainly support this application as it moves forward. Looking perhaps for a motion to approve?
So moved?
Well, second.
Ms. Toth?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Secretary.
Yes, Ms. Newell?
Yes.
Mr. Mallon?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkens?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
Ms. Sager?
Yes.
Dr. Levine?
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Steiner?
Yes.
Okay, it is approved, and in a month, we will have a resolution. You'll have an opportunity to, I think, to review that as it comes through, and then we will adopt it here in a month, and you'll be able to move forward.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, we move to Daniel and Erin Peak.
All right. And whoever's testifying, if you could please raise your right hand.
Why don't we just swear upon it, so that way?
Fair enough.
Do we both testify?
Sorry to interrupt. That's fine. Yep. If you could both please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matters, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do. And please, one at a time, state your name, spell your last name.
Erin Peak, P-E-E-K.
Daniel Peak, P-E-E-K.
Thank you.
Okay. Can you give us a summary of your application?
Sure. I guess I will start, if my wife has anything to add. So we are here to apply for a variance for, I guess, two elements, to a home renovation that we are about to conduct. The first is for the addition of a port cochere. The second is for a roof modification to an existing carriage house on the property. We've been Summit residents for the last four years. Prior to that, we were very close in Maplewood, New Jersey. We have a young family, a seven-year-old and a four-year-old. We plan to be in Summit, hopefully, for, you know, at least the next 10, 15 years, maybe longer. We're active members of the community, and, you know, we seek the board's approval for this modification.
I would just say that we, you know, our first place we lived together was in Summit, so we left for a couple of years and then came back and decided this is where we want to be. And we're hoping that we can improve the aesthetic nature of our home. It was a little bit changed over the years, and we'd like to move back to the historic nature and add to the aesthetic of the neighborhood with the port cochere and adjusting the carriage house roofline.
Okay. Any questions for the owners? You have experts with you?
We do.
Yes, we do.
Who do you want to start with?
Probably Mike DiGeronimo. Probably Mike Geronimo.
Yeah, please.
Patrol out.
Well, we got one side of the room.
Go ahead, I'll, I'll figure it out.
All right. Please raise your right hand. The technical department. Do you swear, friend, that the testimony you're about to give in this matters the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name.
Sure, it's Michael D. Geronimo. It's D.I., capital G, E.R.O.N.I.M.O.
Thank you, and can you briefly describe your background, experience, and three boards you've appeared before recently?
Sure. I'm an architect and planner with Clausen Architects in Maplewood. I have undergraduate degree in architecture, master's degree in city planning. I've been doing planning, architecture, and design for about 25 years. Appeared before boards all over the state and other states. I'm a licensed architect in New Jersey and New York and a licensed planner in New Jersey. I've appeared before this board a few times. Most recently, other boards would be Maplewood, Adam Township, Asbury Park.
Thank you. Any questions from the board, or would you like to accept his credentials?
I think we can accept his credentials. And we're going to work on this side of the room, folks, so if anybody would like to relocate to Mr. Yukos? Or, you know, are most of what you have the same drawings that would then?
Yeah, so every, everything in the presentation, I think I added a couple of pictures from today, but are within the package? We need to submit it as an exhibit, I don't have to do that.
Those pictures will have to be added as, what, A1?
Yes, we can call the whole package A1. Okay.
And then please make sure that that is gotten to.
Okay.
The secretary for the records.
Absolutely, okay. So, as Dan and Erin had mentioned, they own the property at 20 Beacon Road, which is in the R-43 district. It's a little bit over an acre and a half, the property. The house, the principal structure sits a little bit on a rise above Beacon Road. I'll show you a picture in a moment to see that. So, there's a principal structure, the main house that's in the center, and then a carriage house on the, on the westerly side of the property. We're here tonight to talk about some improvements to both the house and to the carriage house structure. And I'll walk you through those as we get to them. The neighborhood around the property consists of similar-sized properties on Beacon and Hobart. They're larger acre and a half to two and a half acre type properties with some accessory structures. The properties that back up to the, the garage side of the, the property is on Fernwood. And they're, the lots there are closer to a half acre, three quarters of an acre, but they're larger homes with attached and detached garages. And the garages, in the case of our, our carriage houses, there's garages that back up to them. So, it's a consistent kind of pattern throughout the neighborhood. This is the, the view of the, the home from Beacon Road. The house was built in the early 1900s, a shingle-style home. It's been modified over the years. And as Erin had mentioned, one of the, the goals of our design is really to bring back some of the historic character and, and give some consistency to the architecture style and detailing of the home. As you can see here, from the road, there's a substantial rise in the topography and some landscape features. So, the house itself is, is very hard to see. The whole house, you know, on the landscape, there, the areas that we're talking about would be on the right, the right side of the photo. So, the port cochere would be added to the house on that side. And then they, the carriage house is actually behind the, the, these evergreen trees here in the background. So, you can't even really see, see it from the road. And so, they're not very visible from the surrounding properties in the neighborhood. These are some photos, again, all these are in the packets of, of the property itself. So, it's, it has a large open rear yard, but the perimeter is, is very heavily screened. So, it has a nice privacy to it. And there's substantial screening in and out of the site existing. And we worked on the landscape to kind of enhance and develop that as well. The house, as I had mentioned, had some additions over the years that weren't quite consistent with the, the original detailing or the, the style of the home. So, there were some additions to the, the front and back with some elements that just don't match the same, same character of the rest of it. And so, part of, part of the goal here is to kind of bring that continuity back in the design. But the image on the upper right is the side of the house that we're proposing, the port cochere. And as you can see there, it's kind of has some, it had some additions over the years. And the massing is, is not quite, you know, typical of, of kind of a, a house of this stature from this era. So, again, we're trying to bring some of that, that quality back. These are some images of the carriage house, again, in the packet. It was most likely built about the same time as the house and was a true carriage house back at, at the time. As you can see from the picture in the, on the left side, the, there is kind of a, a mixed bag of roof forms, doors, windows. It doesn't quite have the, the same sort of richness and character of the, of the main house and certainly the kind of character that we're trying to portray in the done, design throughout the whole, whole property. There are, because of the nature of it, and you can see in the footprint, I'll show you in a, in a little bit, there's, there's a number of kind of stepping in terms of heights and masses. And so, one of the things we're, we're going to be asking about is, is putting some additional square footage over an existing one-story space. So, the footprint doesn't change, but it is taking advantage of some of these kind of odd stepping conditions on the, on the building. This is a view from the neighboring property towards the carriage house. So, then this is something, this is an image I did take today. So, this is kind of the worst-case scenario in terms of the screening in the winter. And it's still pretty heavily screened and really it's only visible from the one property it kind of backs up to. There isn't, there, there was a note in Krista's memo regarding an encroachment with Rich Keller. We'll talk a little bit about that some more. Just for context, though, the, the area that that refers to is in, in this zone. So, there's a small part of this, this wall that actually is over the property line. But it, it's in a location where it backs directly to the garage on the adjacent property. So, it's not something that's, that's visible and it kind of creates this, this kind of separation between the two properties. That's something that was there historically and we're not proposing to do anything in that portion of the building. Again, I had mentioned some of these odd steppings and massings. And so, this particular location, when I get to the design, is an area where we're, we're talking about adding some additional square footage above the one-story portion that's right here. So, I'll explain that as well. As I'm sure the board knows, port cocheres are kind of a consistent element for houses of this era and its style. There's probably, I think probably about a dozen or so examples I could think of in town. The images we see here, a couple of them are on, on Hobart, not just around the corner from this property. But there are some other ones throughout the town. And technically, in the DRO, it's defined as a carport. But, but really, a port cochere in, in the sense of, of a home of this, of these kind, of these kind of design, it's really an extension of the house. So, it has a very porch-like element to it. And it's, it really is a design feature of the house. And it's something that on certain-sized lots, if there's enough room to accommodate it, it makes sense. It doesn't make sense on, on, you know, every house or every, every type of lot. But certainly on a, on a house, a property of this scale, it, it absolutely does. We were actually before this board a few years ago for a port cochere application also. It was granted approval in 2016. This is at 70 Oak Ridge. The images are also in the packet. And it was approved and built, completed in 2017. But I, I added the image in addition to being another example of a port cochere in Summit, but also because the detailing is very similar to what we're proposing. The materials on the base, in this case, are stone. We would have brick. And so, some of the details of the balustrade on top are a little different. But generally speaking, the, the columns and, and the, kind of the richness of the, of the detailing and that sort of extension of the house and that porch-like feel is, is very much consistent with what we're proposing on this property. So, this is the, the front of the house as it is now. As I had mentioned, some of the, there were some inconsistencies in some of the additions over the years. So, if you, if you'll notice, the window patterns are, are kind of mixed and varied. The additions that occurred on the western side of the house here, there's, there's one to the front and there's one to the back. And some adjustments on the sides. They lack some of the detail and character of those original elements on the house, the original design features. And so, a large part of our design effort on the house, regardless of the, the port cochere already, the things we're doing, you know, specifically with the variance, is to kind of bring that house back to having that kind of architectural heritage and the detailing, the richness that it, it had before. So, this is the proposed design concept. And most of the elements you see here are, are refinements of what was there. So, the, we're, we're taking and putting the proper windows in that would be consistent with the kind of historic detailing of the house. And then for the areas that were additions, we're bringing back sort of the, the details and the richness of the design that sort of matches the rest of the, of the home and the kind of historic intent of it. We had submitted a landscape plan along with our drawings. Our landscape architect, Sevier Morgan, developed this for us. And so, the property, just to kind of give you an overview of what's, what's proposed, the existing access off of Beacon would remain with the driveway coming across the front yard. Currently, it, it's in that position and then it extends back to the carriage house, which is in this corner over here. So, that's the southwestern corner of the property. The design of the, of the property included a proposed pool and a few, a couple of pool structures that go with the pool. There's an addition on the back of the house here that was, is proposed, as well as the port cochere and the, the revisions to the carriage house that were here the night before. All of the, all of the overarching coverages and floor areas are conforming with the design. And all the setbacks to the principal structure are conforming. The, the carriage house has some existing non-conformities relative to its setback. Obviously, if there's an encroachment, that's certainly one of them. But what we're proposing to the carriage house doesn't change the footprint. And I'll show you where we're doing and what we're doing there. And I'll also note that the port cochere, which is about 20 by 14 in, in size, it adds, it contributes to the, the coverage on the property. But again, that's well within what's allowed. And technically, if it was not a port cochere, if it was just a porch or even part of the building, it would, it would be a conforming addition as far as the coverages and setbacks and everything else associated with it. These are just a couple of other renderings showing the rear of the property. On the, on the left, you can see the, some of the refinements to the, the back of the house. Again, taking some of the additions that were made and, and bringing the, the architectural richness and details to those so that it has a consistency and, and it's kind of true to that, the original kind of intent of some of the shingle-style details. And then on the, on the right, you can see, looking across the backyard, you can see the pool and the structures associated with the pool. And then in the, in the far background is the, the carriage house. And I'll show you that a little closer up. But again, the idea was to try to bring a consistency to some of these elements, both on the house and the carriage house that are kind of in, in conflict with the original kind of design intent and, and kind of form and massing of the, of the home. This is just a layout of the first floor. The port cochere is here. So, the idea is you would, you would come across the front and then this would be a place for a drop-off, weather-protected drop-off. And then you can continue on to the back of the property and the carriage house. And then, again, similar to the photo I showed you of the other one in town, the detailing, again, was, is, is picking up on that, the character of the house and is really considered an extension of that with those porch-like elements. So, the, the balustrade, for example, on the top is, is similar to some of the other balustrade details we're doing elsewhere on the house. The brick and the, the columns are consistent with other elements that are part of the design and is really our extension of, of the overall design of the property. One of the things that we had been developing since we'd submitted the variance application was looking at the opportunity to do solar panels. And as it, as it turns out, from a, from a solar angle standpoint, the location where we're proposing the port cochere actually works very well from that. So, and because it's a flat roof and it has the balustrades, it would, it really wouldn't be visible from the ground. So, it actually becomes a very ideal location for that. So, we see that as another potential benefit of this because it gives an opportunity to do that in a kind of a sustainable way. The carriage house is here. And this is a cropped and zoomed-in version of it, and, and Rich will talk a little bit more about it. But you can see that, that small encroachment is here and it's, it's up against the adjacent garage behind it. The, there's a small X here. It's a little hard to see, but it's this corner here. That was that part of the image that I had showed you before. That was one story. That's where we're going to add some additional square footage on the, on the second floor. Technically, because it's a carriage house, not a garage, it's the, there's two types of setbacks relative to accessory structures. And so, it's treated as an, as an active setback. So, that's a, that's an, that's an additional distance. So, it's a 15-foot setback. So, the, what we're proposing for this, this location, which is going to be an elevator, residential elevator, and some changes we are doing to the roof just to make it look more consistent, those will all fall within that 15-foot zone, which is why we're requesting a variance for that as well. And you can also see from the photo that really the, there is heavy landscape all around the, the property, but especially around the garage. And, you know, in this case, over here, the garages back up to one another. So, there's really no view to it from that property. And from this one, which is the only one that really has some, some view, there are limited screen views of it. And we are, as part of the changes, I'll show you in a minute, we're, we're reconfiguring the roof form to make it look more attractive anyway. So, we think that's a positive. We don't think it, you know, in any way kind of takes away from the, the, the other neighboring properties. That's just the example, the floor plan of the garage. The area that we're talking about, again, here is, is an elevator that we're putting in this back corner. And then we had included in, in our package the kind of before-and-after elevations of the, of the design. And so, again, similar to that picture I showed you initially, there is kind of this mixed bag of forms and elements and door sizes and window types. And so, what the proposed design does is really pick up on the architectural cues of the, the main house and kind of calm down some of the massing and, and the roof forms so that it is more in keeping and you kind of have a more consistent cohesive look for the entire property, which we think is a tremendous benefit. And then, again, here's this example of the front and, and kind of the proposed character and look, feel. The port cochere is the element here, obviously. And it, just thinking back to that original photo, standing on Beacon Road, all you really see is probably the top of that balustrade anyway, which we think will be an attractive element. As far as the positive and negative criteria, we believe that this application serves the purposes owning and the master plan by having an architectural aesthetic enhancement to the, to a historic property and kind of bringing the continuity of the architectural elements. We think that's a, a very positive improvement to the streetscape. The, that applies to the, the house itself, the port cochere, but also especially to the, to the garage and the carriage house and how that has been improved and the aesthetic of, of it has been improved and is consistent with the neighborhood. So, all the additions, all the changes we're proposing are, work within kind of that historic massing and, and something you would see in, in this part of Summit. So, we believe that's a, that's, there's definitely a positive. The solar panels are another example of an opportunity we have to do something sustainable, which we also think is, is a great benefit. As far as the negative criteria, I, we don't believe that this impacts neighboring properties in any way, in a detrimental way. It's very much consistent with the streetscape and the other homes in the, in the neighborhood and with the kind of topography and landscape that exists on the property. It really doesn't adversely affect anybody or around it. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
To our professionals first.
I have no questions.
Okay. Please.
Just a quick question. Good evening. Ed Snikus from Burgess Associates. Just regarding the addition to the carriage house, it's for the elevator, you were saying?
Yes.
Okay. It's just the elevator shaft itself. Is there any noise associated with the elevator?
No, it's a residential quality elevator. It's all within the roof, so it has, it doesn't have a noise or a mechanical area or anything like that. It's a total of 52 square feet, I believe, of additional floor area.
It's not expanding the living area of that space.
No.
Just for access.
It's just for access. The layout of the, it's a little hard to see on the screen, but the layout of the upper floor is pretty much unchanged, other than the location of the stair and the elevator. There's no proposal to change any of the size of it or the size of the rooms or bathrooms or anything like that. It's really for access.
Thank you.
And that doesn't change any of the encroachment that you're?
No. No, the encroachment is, yeah.
You're just over your first floor elevation.
Yeah, the area we're talking about for the elevator is in this corner over here. The encroachment is in this little part here that's over the property. So it's within the 15 feet, but it's not.
And I'm assuming we'll hear more about that. Okay. Any other questions from the board?
I have one. Just a clarification. I understand that your first variance is for the port cochere. I understand that. You mentioned that the second one was for the height of the carriage house?
No, just the...
Is it for the steep slopes?
It's, well tactically, we're expanding it within that 15-foot zone. So it would apply to the elevator, the additional square footage above the elevator for the second.
So it's for a setback?
For setback, for setback.
Okay. What about the steep slope disturbance mentioned?
Rich Keller, our engineer, will address that as well.
Okay.
We'll hold that one.
Right.
Anyone else?
I just had a question for Mr. Ball. Regarding the encroachment, is there anything problematic about potentially approving a variance for a piece of the property that does encroach?
So it's sort of a separate issue, but usually we like to address those when they come before the board and it's the applicant's property that is in fact encroaching. This one's a bit complicated because I imagine it dates back quite some time. But yeah, we can explore the options of either obtaining an easement for the encroachment or discussing that further, but I imagine we'll hear more shortly.
Any other questions?
Well, this is more of a question for the homeowners, but sort of regarding the encroachment, have you had conversations about this with the affected neighbor?
We have not had any conversations with the neighbor about this. The structure has existed for 80 years and both houses have turned over numerous times.
Any other questions of this witness? Any questions from the public for this witness? Okay, we will, I can assume you wish to call your second witness at this point?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you'd like to switch out.
Technology break.
I wonder why face recognition's not working here.
Okay, Mr. Ball will swear you in.
Do you swear affirm testimony you're about to give in this matter, the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name.
Richard Keller, K.E.L.L.E.R. I'm a principal with Casey &amp; Keller located at 258 Main Street in Milburn, New Jersey.
And can you briefly describe your background, experience, and three boards you've appeared before recently?
Certainly. Yeah, I've been licensed as an engineer since 1989, as a planner since 1990. I hold a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering with a declared concentration in Water Resources and Environmental Engineering, and that is from Rutgers University. I also hold a Master's in Architecture with a declared concentration in Urban Planning and Design, and that is from the New Jersey Institute of Technology where I was also an adjunct professor in both undergraduate and graduate divisions for approximately 11 years. I've appeared before approximately 110 boards throughout the state of New Jersey, including both the Summit Planning Board and Board of Adjustment. I actually just stepped down from being the engineering consultant to put the planning board and board of adjustment in Long Hill Township. And I have acted as the conflict engineer when the current engineer in South Orange has conflicts, we step in as the municipal engineer there. And I've also acted as the planning consultant to the borough of Caldwell. My licenses are in good effect.
I imagine there's no questions for Mr. Keller.
We accept your credentials and please proceed.
Thank you. It's been a while since I've been before this board though, so it's nice to be back. What I want to do quickly, we, it's rare when I get double teamed with another planner, so I'm going to keep, just address a few engineering questions and then just touch on the planning aspects with regard to the steep slope variance. And then because I talk too much, I'm going to try to keep it short, but if I go too long, you'll understand. With regard to the image that was shown, the property as indicated, hold on, let me, why are we not zooming in here? Here we go. The property as was indicated is actually closer to 1.8 acres, located in the R43 zone. The existing site as indicated, there's a driveway that comes off of Beacon Road up into the site and accesses to the existing two-car garage that's in the back of the property. As was indicated, none of that front is changing. And what I thought was important to recognize is that, given the topography and the location of the retaining walls in the front yard, from Beacon Road, you'll be basically be seeing the very upper portion of the port cochere. You will not be seeing, when each of the times I've been to the property, if there's been a car parked in that part of the driveway, you actually can't see the car from that part of the road. So what you'll see from the road, as well as primarily from any of the neighbors to the bottom of the drawing, which is to the east, if you can see it at all, you'll basically see the top portion of the port cochere. So it really has no negative impact on Beacon Road whatsoever. The area in question that was talked about, the encroachment, is located up right in that one little corner. There are no additions being placed, no mass being placed in that portion. To be honest with you, this board wouldn't have the authority to grant any kind of addition into that area. However, given the fact that this garage has existed since the early 1900s and that encroachment is there, it's really impossible to tell what prescriptive rights have been picked up over time. This is really a title issue between two homeowners. This board clearly wouldn't have the authority to allow any addition onto that, whether it's mass or footprint into that area. But certainly, you would have the authority to grant any other changes, including the second-story area. And I would point out, that is very, that addition is very close to 15 feet. The offset to the back property line is 16 feet. That is coming in, it looks actually a little larger actually, so I think we might actually be compliant, but I think we noticed for the variance anyways, since we are adding to that active structure and the active structure is less than 15 feet away. But all of the improvements are outside of that area, whether, when an encroachment's gone on at all, they may have picked up rights through either adverse possession or just general prescriptive rights. And that's really, again, a title issue between two owners. It's not something that would require an easement from the neighbors. It exists and it'd be a private matter. So if they ever decide, if the neighbor decided there was a problem, then the attorneys would work out whether there was any prescriptive rights involved and whether it would require any modifications to the building. But as far as the, anything that you're, we're asking you to approve tonight is well clear of that, and I actually think that that elevator is more than 15 feet away. But we have noticed that just in case it's under that, we are seeking variance relief for that. You can see that the, as was indicated by the architect, the location of the next-door garage, as well as the property line coming in at the back corner and the existing landscaping, which is both evergreen and deciduous, means that any of the changes, even if they could see the back of it, what they would see would be a more attractive building, but it really is not seen and has no negative impact on the neighbor. If we go over to the, to talk about the steep slopes for a second, this is the base survey, it's part of your application. You can see the green areas are slopes in excess of 15%, which is what your, what this township considers to be steep slopes. Most of the steep slopes are located in the front of the property. There is, and there's a small section that's located on the easterly side of the property. We're planning no changes to the front of the property, so you'll see no effect from Beacon Road. We are planning on filling in some of the areas against that steep slope area and eliminating approximately 1,094 square feet of steep slopes, I believe it is. The, if we go forward to the, we go forward to the grading plan, you'll see that the only area of steep slopes that we're disturbing, basically in this area, what that does is that we're actually filling in that area and bolstering it up with a retaining wall so that we can create a level lawn area adjacent to the property. Going back to the, you'll see that currently there is an existing patio in the side yard, a fountain, all of that will be removed and will be replaced with a lawn panel in the side yard. But to do that and to pick that up and create that axis off of one of the primary spaces in the house, onto that lawn panel, we're seeking to do a retaining wall with a generous landscaping plan to build that up. I would point out that, you know, whenever you're seeking variances, especially for things like steep slopes, we look to the purpose of your steep slope ordinance. And the steep slope area requirements, the purpose in finding effect is the purpose of the steep slope ordinance is to minimize any adverse impacts caused by the development in steep slopes, including but not limited to erosion, siltation, flooding, surface water runoff, and pollution of potable water supplies from point and non-point sources. The installation of the retaining wall on the side of the house to create that level lawn panel will have no negative impact on any of these metrics. The actual flattening of that area will slow runoff, it will reduce the possibility of erosion and siltation, it will actually decrease the surface water runoff and have no effect on any flooding. And there certainly are no potable water sources or nearby streams that will be affected. So essentially, keep in mind, your ordinance allows the administrative approval of up to 1,000 square feet of steep slopes, provided there's no adverse impact on neighboring properties. We're over that by about 100 square feet. And again, we think that the benefits would clearly outweigh any detriments. Just to bolster up some of the, back to the image, just to bolster up some of the proofs that have already been added, we think that the variances can be granted as a combination of C2 and C1. The C2 is where the purposes of the land use are advanced and the benefits from the deviations outweigh any potential detriment. It's also known as the flexible C variance. We think that this is the, on a net basis, all of the changes to this property clearly outweigh any possible detriment. We can't actually find any detriment. We are certainly, this would fit, advance a number of the purposes of the land use act under 4055D2. First would be A, which would be to advance general welfare. The proposed steep slope disturbance will decrease runoff and no adverse impacts. There's no impact of the overall project on the enjoyment of air, light, and open space for the neighbors. We think certainly this promotes a desirable visual environment. This is a much improved aesthetic overhaul to this building, including additions. And keep in mind, all the additions to the back, the pool, all that, none of that requires variance relief. I'm always really elated when I have clients like the Peaks who are willing to spend what sometimes is a ridiculous amount of money to take an old home and restore it to its glory and make it a better public building on the streetscape and spend that kind of time and love and stewardship on a building that deserves it and remove old, unattractive additions and do what was proper. We certainly think that therefore it promotes the conservation of a historic home and carriage house by removing those previously inappropriate additions. We think in terms of the, any relief that's required for the carriage house would certainly come under C1, where the location and configuration of the lawful existing structure on that site creates a condition. We, obviously, if we were starting fresh, we'd move it 15 feet off, but this clearly predates zoning. And all of the changes to the outside, certainly facing into the courtyard, towards the property, are vast aesthetic improvements and making it handicapped accessible to the second floor, I think, is admirable. And it certainly does not encroach, I don't think it actually encroaches within the 15 feet, it may be very close, but certainly there'll be no noise associated with, no negative impacts associated. So this just brings me to the negative criteria, which is of course in two prongs. One is that there's no substantial detriment to the public good, and the second is that there's no substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the master plan. Certainly, I don't see any negative impacts. The elevator will be quiet, it will provide handicap accessibility to the existing living spaces. The port cochere will provide, you know, one of the nice things, we love carriage houses, but one of the downsides is you have no place to take the groceries out of the car when it's raining. The addition of a port cochere is historically appropriate and it provides that relief for the applicant. And really, it can't be seen from the street anyways. So we think there's no detriment to the public good and certainly we see no damage or detriment to the intent and purpose of the master plan. We think this is a great application and we hope that you'll approve it.
All right. Questions from our professionals?
The only comments I'd just like to make as far as we didn't touch on stormwater, but the applicant has proposed a fairly substantial stormwater collection system consisting of inlets in the areas that he was talking about disturbing in the steep slopes, around the patio and the rear of the home, and also from the new driveway, I'm sorry, the new garage, improved garage, as well as I believe the port cochere. So he's picking up a lot of the increased impermeable, he's picking up actually more than the, what was required for the increased impermeable coverage. So that's a positive. The only question I had was, or comment I had was that the proposed walls along the area to the side where they're in the steep slope incursion, they're about four feet high, I think is a maximum. I'm assuming there's going to be fall protection, but they're still under the 10-foot maximum for requiring a variance. So I think that's, I just wanted to point that out. Everything else though, you know, the incursion or the encroachment we talked about, that's a legal issue and I just don't really have any other comments on it.
And there were a couple of changes you requested, which we will comply with all of the comments in your engineer's memo.
Mr. Snikus?
No questions, thank you.
Getting to the legal issue, Andy, I think we heard an opinion, a legal opinion from this witness. Would you like to comment on that?
Well, I do have a question, and I know you mentioned there may be prescriptive rights that are required, but I imagine there's been no action filed in court, right, to determine the property boundaries of the issue?
Correct.
So while there may be a potential adverse possession claim, hasn't been done yet. So as it currently stands, it would remain to be encroaching. And then the question is, what do the board members think is the best course of action moving forward? I know in the past, we've seen instances where there's a minor encroachment of a retaining wall, but the neighbor came in and said, for example, I have no issue with it, it's fine, and we determined that no action was necessary. Other instances of encroachment, we determined that it would require that the applicant discuss it with the neighbor and potentially seek an easement in order to cure that encroachment. So there's those few possibilities that we need to consider and see what the best fit is for this application.
Okay. I figured we needed to clarify that one. Other questions of this witness from the board?
I would just like to add that in a perfect world, the neighbor would say, fine. They've had, as indicated by the owners, has been turnover of both properties. I'm sure the surveys, both surveys showed that encroachment and their title policies reflected it. To require an easement from the neighbor, if the neighbor wasn't willing to go along with that, then they would have to enter into a legal matter, which could take 10 years and, you know, literally tens of thousands of dollars before we'd find out whether, what the relief was. I've never seen an encroachment that that's, my firm started as surveyors and that's our primary business going back to the 1890s. I've never seen where a legal action required the removal of an encroachment. Clearly, on the boards that I've represented and what's been in the past is that as long as there's no new encroachments, this board would not have the authority to improve a new encroachment or a continuation or an extension of that encroachment. But certainly, it really is a legal matter and I don't know that, I think if you were to require that the Peaks get an easement from their neighbor, I think it could scuttle the entire project, to be quite honest with you.
And I'm not sure that we would necessarily require the final acquisition of an easement, but what we could consider is that they at least approach the neighbors and have that conversation to discuss whether an easement's a possibility there.
Please.
I would also...
Um, I would also like to note that those neighbors are within 200 feet, and they were notified of the hearing and the entire project, um, and had the opportunity to come to this meeting tonight if they objected.
Yeah, we, we do understand that. Thank you. Any other questions of this witness? Any questions from anyone in the public for this witness? Uh, one technical question, was your presentation the exact same as the other video?
Yes, it was.
Okay, so just beneath one copy, okay. To make sure we, we get that properly in the record.
Understood.
Um, okay, uh, at this time, I guess, uh, do you have any other witnesses, or is-
Uh, no, we do not.
Okay, then, uh, at this point, are there any, um, any members of the public that wish to express an opinion on this case? Seeing, I don't think there's anybody from the public in here at all, at all for any other case. Okay, um, at that point, uh, it's up to you folks if you have anything to, uh, summarize and wrap up your case.
Uh, no, I, we kindly asked the board's permission to, uh, proceed with the, uh, with the two, uh, the two amendment, or the two approvals. Um, we thank you very much for listening, and, uh, sure, I guess if there's any other questions, follow your process.
Okay, we will, uh, we will turn to our attorney for conditions.
So the one that we already confirmed was that, uh, our usual compliance with the conditions noted in the board engineer's memorandum. And then the only other condition that popped out as a possibility is the, the potential encroachment and how the board would prefer to handle that, so.
Why don't we handle that one first, and, uh, any, uh, any opinions on how we should move forward with that?
Well, I am concerned, sorry, you were staring at me.
Our, our, our newest, our newest board member, Walter.
Thank you, sorry, sorry about that. Um, the comments that were made about accepting the encroachment as is seem to be problematic if we just move forward. So I would prefer that we have some clarification, right? It doesn't have to be a final thing, but we don't know if they, your neighbors got notice in this gigantic package and specifically saw the encroachment, so that just seems like an issue. If we move forward, is that acceptance, that we're saying that, okay, we're saying it's a prescriptive easement? Are we saying that we're accepting that this has been, uh, on notice for the past 80 years? I would feel very uncomfortable with that, moving forward.
Right, and just to clarify, if the board does approve it, it's not granting that encroachment, like, it's been discussed, we don't have the authority to allow encroachments. It would still remain a private action between the two neighbors, regardless of our decision here tonight.
Gotcha.
I'm concerned, you know, I don't, I don't have a great deal of concern that neighbors are going to come and say, "Oh, my goodness, you're encroaching by six inches or whatever onto my property." But the fact that the conversation hasn't been had yet is, is something a little leery of, you know, proceeding with, and, you know, maybe we make it a conditional sort of situation, but, uh, having, I, I can't recall us encountering a situation where the applicants haven't at least had some sort of dialogue with their neighbors concerning an encroachment. And I appreciate the point of notice, but I, I don't know, a, a lot of these notices get sent to my house, and I can sort of ignore them unless they're particularly interesting. And I would imagine most folks perceive them that way, even though the notice statutes are what they are. But I, I think we want to promote a successful project for, for everyone, so I think encouraging that conversation through conditions is probably the right way to go.
Anyone else? Anyone disagree with that, uh, that tag?
I don't disagree with that.
Go ahead.
I don't disagree with that.
You don't, okay.
I do not.
So can you-
So I suppose the question is then of the applicants, would you be willing to at least have that discussion with your neighbors? We wouldn't necessarily, uh, condition the entire approval on finally entering an easement, but approach them and inquire whether they have an issue with it, make them aware of the encroachment, and then potentially discuss that possibility of clearing up that title issue?
Uh, yes, we'll certainly approach them. Um, what, what establishes that we've done this?
I suppose you would, uh, contact the board, let us know that you have indeed had that discussion with them, and if we hear them yelling and screaming about an issue, we'll, we'll know if, uh, it's been successful or not.
As we don't do the resolution for at least a month, you've got some time, and you can feedback through Mr. Cole or Mr. Ball.
Provide, provide notice to the board that we've had this conversation within-
And hopefully, give us some sense of what it is that's occurred.
Okay.
An appropriate way to police that?
I think so.
Okay.
That, that follow-up to the board, that be considered a statement under oath?
It's-
Or whenever oath was sworn?
They can certify to us, I suppose, if we wanted to require that, but I think, uh, you know, if they approach the board and tell us that they've had the conversation, um, then we can always confirm, try to, uh, contact the neighbors if there are any issues following up from that.
I think, I, I, again, I, I think at this point, we're looking at people who's, as was, uh, stated in some of the testimony, put an awful lot of effort and, uh, and care into their application, and I don't think they jeopardize it by not making a phone call. Just, uh, I don't think that's going to happen, at least I would hope not.
And also, I mean, just a clarification, because I heard, I heard that homeowners say two variances. I believe there's three here, the port cochere, the set-off for the carriage house, and the steep slopes, um, disturb, disturbance.
Correct. We were just handling the legal issue at this point.
I understand, I understand.
Now we'll go to the overall, or comments from the board and the deliberations of the board on all three variances. And who would like to kick us off on that? Go for it.
I am supportive of the application, and we've gotten a legal issue passed us. I think, uh, I, I like the architectural element of adding the port cochere. I think it will improve the overall streetscape, even though most of it will be barely visible. Um, I think there's, there are improvements to stormwater management associated with the project, and, uh, overall, I think it'll enhance the utility of the property without really having any negative impact on the neighborhood.
Anyone else wish to-
I, I, I'm in agreement, and I would just remind the board that in our annual report to the planning board last year, we recommended that port cochers be carved out from the prescriptive rule about carports, um, so that ideally, if this were happening a year from now, you, you wouldn't need a variance, um, but, you know, stay tuned for that one.
Have they received that report?
Uh, yes, it was sent, and they have not discussed DRO changes at this time, but when they do discuss DRO changes, it will be at the top of the list.
So, a little early, but, uh, thank you.
So, so, in, in general, this board has, the zoning board has been favorably inclined towards appropriate port cochers.
Any other comments from board members? I'd have to say that, uh, it's an, it's, it's a wonderful application, and certainly been, it's, it's, uh, I can enthusiastically support it. They, they, they've put together a good plan, and have come with every one of the finite details. It's the last time I've, I think it's the first time I've seen John Winston say that this was a great landscaping plan. Uh, you know, uh, I think it's, uh, it's certainly something that deserves our support, and I see absolutely no negatives to it. Uh, I wish it had been six inches over, so we wouldn't have had to deal with that, but it isn't, so we're dealing with it, and hopefully we come up with a compromise that will work. So I certainly can, can support it and would entertain a motion to approve.
She'll move.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Secretary.
Sure. Ms. Newell?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Mr. Leickets?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
Ms. Sager?
Yes.
Dr. Levine?
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Steiner?
Yes.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, and good luck with the pro, with the project.
Thank you, good luck.
And, uh, we will take a five-minute break to allow the bed rosin application to, uh, are you going to tell me something I don't want to hear? Let's take the break, and we'll come back to you.
Thank you.
You may want to talk to him.